I'd like to call the first, the second meeting of the month of December to order. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas. Mayor McCleod.
Can everybody please raise Trustee Stanton? You want to leave us on the pledge?
My honor.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Stanton.
Welcome.
In the interest of disclosure, I want to note that this meeting is being telecast live. It will be shown throughout the week on our cable channels. Move on to item number three, recognition of the audience. This is a time if someone has a question or concern, for an item that is not on the agenda, now's the time to come forward. Going once, twice, three times, we'll move on. Chair accept a motion to approve the minutes of the December 4th, 2017 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion, there's a second. Are any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. Move on to find consent agenda. Chair accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Does anybody want anything pulled out of the consent agenda? The items that will be voted on in the consent agenda are the following. A, the approval of the agenda. B, approval of the schedule of bills for December 18th, 2017 totaling $9,881,585. Big numbers, big numbers. C, request board approval of a resolution adopt a policy prohibiting sexual harassment for the Village of Hoffman Estates. D, request board approval of a resolution establishing fees for police and fire department personnel hire back rates. E, request board approval of the 2018 Village Board and Standing Committee meeting schedule. F, request board approval of a request by the Hoffman Estates Park District for an extension of the Chino Park Intergovernmental Agreement to December 18th, 2037. G, request board approval of a request by Mr. Ace LLC doing business as Hoffman Estates Ace for approval of an incentive agreement for the Ace Hardware Store in the Crossroads Commons Shopping Center. H, request board approval of an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with SVAP Hoffman Plaza 4 LP for the sale of 7585 East Gulf Road Retroactive to December 6th, 2017. I, request board approval of a contract extension for elevator inspection and plan review services to Elevator Inspection Service Company, Inc., Burr Ridge, Illinois. J, request board authorization to, one, way formal bidding, and two, award contract for purchase of a 2018 Ferrari Igniter Pumper to Ferrari Fire Apparatus Holden, Louisiana in an amount not to exceed $587,000. K, request board authorization to purchase excess property and liability insurance and excess workers' compensation insurance from Alliant Americas Brokerage Services. L, request board approval to enter an agreement for bond counsel and possibly disclosure counsel legal services with Louis F. Cancar Limited for the upcoming bond refunding anticipation, refunding anticipated take place into FY 2018. M, request board authorization to declare $16,188,101 as a developer and taxing district amplification for tax levy 2016 within the EDA Special Tax Allocation Fund and direct the Treasury to remit said funds to the developer and taxing districts per Public Act 097-0636. N, request board authorization to extend 2017 contract for 2018 contract to Parkway Tree Trimming Program to Winkler's Tree and Landscaping, Inc., LaGrange, Illinois, low bid in an amount not to exceed $50,000. O, request board authorization to, one, way formal bidding, and two, purchase a Portage Message Board through Tapco, Inc., Brown Deer, Wisconsin, using the U.S. Community's contract discount in an amount not to exceed $17,644.35.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need to vote on G separately since there were some changes to the document?
That would probably be advisable, wouldn't it, Consulate?
Which one are we talking about?
G.
Mr. Ace.
The ace incentive.
There were some changes to the document.
Yeah, to the cover resolution, there were some changes.
Yeah.
We could.
Oh, it should be.
The resolution actually was drafted committee.
Yeah.
You could do it either way.
Okay.
But if you want to pull it.
Whichever way.
If you want to pull it.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we were doing it the correct way.
So why don't we pull G?
Yeah, just so it's on the record.
We'll have a, the vote then will be on 5A through F and H through O. There's a motion, a second. Any questions? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried. We move back to 5G, request board approval of a request by Mr. Ace LLC doing business as Hoffman Estates Ace for approval of an incentive agreement for the Ace Hardware Store in the Crossroads Commons Shopping Center. Chair accept a motion.
So moved.
Second, as amended.
There's a motion and there's a second as the agreement was amended. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to 6A, President's Report. We do have some great citizens award here. We have several of them. We have for the Village of Hoffman Estates is proud to present the great citizen award to Lieutenant Carl Baumert, Karen Arnett, Lindescheck, Merrill Abrahamian, Antonio Garcia, Rick Wmet, Phil Giacconi, Mark Wondolkowski, and Dan Stopka on Monday, December 18th, 2017 in recognition of years of service leading the Shop with a Cop program which helps local underprivileged children and their families each year as Christmas time. These folks continue to seek and leverage support for this great program through volunteer recruitment, individual donations, and support from local businesses, within-kind donations of products and services. We applaud all of them for doing their part in helping the Village of Hoffman Estates continue to grow to greatness. Can all you folks come on up? Carl, Merrill, everybody, come on up.
You've got to go down there. You have to shake your own hand.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Good to see you. Congratulations, Carl. You're looking dapper tonight.
Hold on a minute, girl.
Good to see you.
Hey, I forgot his.
Very well done.
Carl, where are you?
Yeah.
There you go.
How is Karen to be in two places at one time?
I don't know. She doesn't run around a lot. Yeah, Phil's here too. There you go, Phil. Thank you all. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Karen? Can you everybody stay up here for a picture?
Karen, thank you very much. You're done.
The bookends, right?
Karen, can you switch up here too quick?
I got to see. I got all the tall ones.
Thank you for all you do. We have a certificate of achievement to present also to Sam Deveraux. Is Sam here? Sam and your family, you want to come on up by the speaker's stand there for a minute? Is that your mom, Sam?
Yeah.
Welcome, welcome to both of you. The Village of Hoffman Estates is proud to present the certificate of achievement to Sam Deveraux. Let me give you a little information on Sam. On the right page here. Here we go. Samuel Deveraux, Jr. at Coedon High School has been a part of the Hoffman Estates High School Special Olympics Team since his freshman year and is competing in Special Olympics since the age of eight as part of the school District 54 Special Olympics Team. Samuel competes in unified soccer and bocce ball, basketball, volleyball, snowshoeing, downhill skiing, and track and field. What are you doing in your spare time, Sam? Here is what he does. Samuel also participates in bowling and swimming outside of his high school activities. Additional noted accomplishments include being named Athlete of the Year for District 54 in eighth grade, making the Chicago Fire All-Star Team, having the chance to speak to students at his former school, John Mead Junior High, about the Special Olympics, and receiving a gold medal alongside his sister and a state championship for bocce. And that's not all. Samuel also has his black belt in karate. Yes. Clearly Samuel's come a long way since starting the Young Athletes Program. He's developed lifelong friends and has become a leader, friend, and helper to other athletes in the program. I'm happy to announce that Samuel will take part in the USA Special Olympic Games in Seattle, Washington, July 2018, representing Hoffman Estates High School and Team Illinois for track and field. Well done, Samuel. So, therefore, on Monday, December 18th, 2017, in recognition of his athletic accomplishments in the areas of soccer, basketball, volleyball, snowshoeing, and track and field with an Hoffman Estates High School Special Olympics Program, Mr. Deveraux recently made the Illinois State Special Olympics Team and will represent Team Illinois for track and field in the USA Games in July of 2018. Mr. Deveraux is known as a leader, friend, and helper to all the athletes in the program and we wish him the best of luck in his endeavors. Samuel, come on up. Mom, too.
Very well done.
Nice going, Samuel.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mom.
Good luck next year.
Yes. Well, I'll be rooting for you.
Great job.
Let's get a picture of Samuel, Mom. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have some proclamations, I believe, Madam Clerk.
We do, they're all spread out.
We sure do, and I get to have the first one. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the Public Works Department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of its citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 30 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Thursday, December 21st, 2017, as Robert Marco Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. We appreciate the great job that Bob has done for us for 30 years, keeps those vehicles going along with his, his fellows there.
Did you first got here?
They're a horse-drawn, I think, weren't they?
Oh, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. Come on up, Bob.
And you haven't aged a bit.
No, I haven't.
Not a bit.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
That was a good.
It's not a great work.
Got a picture, Bob. You got anybody in your family here, too?
Yeah, my wife and me.
Come on up. Jan will take a picture with your camera. We'll get a picture with you and Howard, too, after.
You have to give her your camera, she'll take it.
She'll take a picture of him.
Yeah, she'll take a picture.
She'll do it.
Yeah.
She's the only one that knows how.
I am. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the Police Department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting in said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas the length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of its citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 25 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting in, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Saturday, December 30th, 2017, as Carl Baumert Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second. We appreciate the great job that Lieutenant Baumert has done for the Police Department. We also have to recognize, as we did earlier, what he does with Shop with the Cop for 18 years. He has spent countless hours organizing a strong committee to, to raise money for these funds and promote many different events, golf outings, Seventh Heaven Brew Fest, it was previously Jingle Mingle, bowling fundraisers, you know it. Carl is always out there raising money for Special Olympics, and we really appreciate it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. Come on down, Carl.
You have to call Baumert, nice.
And I haven't aged at all.
No, not a bit.
I'm not saying that to you.
You've got a great hairstyle, too.
Picture, Carl, picture time.
I have my Shop with the Cop family here.
Bring them up.
Come on, the Shop with the Cop family.
Come on up.
I'm coming. Hold on. I'll get that. I'll take it, I'll take it. Karen, should we go over here? Then you can be right in the middle. And I'm going to do one more after. I'll center it a little. Okay, well, I'm going to take one more. There we go. Nice group. Okay.
Thank you.
Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the Police Department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of its citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 25 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Saturday, December 30th, 2017, as Harry Russman Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. We appreciate the great job that Harry has done throughout the years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. Chief, you want to come on up?
And I have the next one. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the Police Department upon its roster has an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, whereas the length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks makes a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of the citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 19th, 2017, as John Benning Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. We appreciate the great job that Jan has done and will be seeing him begin shortly another dear graduation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. Who's next?
I am. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the Public Works Department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of its citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Friday, January 5th, 2018, as Howard Delord Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. We appreciate the great job that Howard's done for the past 20 years, working on all those vehicles of innumerable descriptions and types, and thank you, Trustee Palafas. I know you had a concert for your son you had to go to, but Trustee Palafas is in the House. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. Howard, come on up. Let's get a picture with Howard, and then we want Bob Marco to come back up and take one. Hey, Bob, can you come on up? Déjà vu all over again. Okay, who's got the next one?
I have the next and last. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas the United States of America has historically been a melting pot where people of all nationalities, religious faiths, and cultures come together as one, and as the strength of our great village rests in the cooperative community of its citizens, and whereas our only hope of establishing peace among diverse peoples is through recognizing our connectedness and common dream of peace on earth, and whereas the first day of a new year typically denotes hopeful expectation and positive resolve in the hearts and minds of our citizens, and whereas the School of Metaphysics, a worldwide organization founded in our country to promote peace, understanding, and goodwill through teaching that living peaceably begins by thinking peacefully, has called for a universal hour of peace over the midnight hour, December 31st, 2017, to January 1st, 2018, be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims December 31st, 2017, at 11:30 PM local time, as the universal hour of peace in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all Hoffman Estates residences, residents, and businesses to stand united in common purpose, committing ourselves in thought and action, so peace may move across the face of the earth of the dawning of the new year.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. We appreciate the great work of the School of Metaphysics. Is Sandy Lightner here?
Yes.
Come on up. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. You folks want to explain a little bit of what you do with the microphone there? Is that on, Mr. Norris?
I'll have to check it up there. It's on here.
Okay.
Thank you. So, we're the School of Metaphysics in Palatine, and we're a 501(c)(3) educational institution. We teach adults to harness their peacefulness, contentment, and security, and every year around this time, we reach out to the neighboring cities and communities to see if they'll sign off on a peace proclamation, and the Village of Hoffman Estates is always very eager and gracious. I've been here for the past three years, and I did a little research on Hoffman Estates, and I see that your motto here is growing to greatness, and it shows a lot with your actions, so I really want to thank you on behalf of all of the School of Metaphysics, and may peace be with you always.
Thank you.
And I also brought, actually, a peace ornament that we want to
Oh, great.
share with you all, and this has the year on it and a peace dove that we want to present to you in appreciation for your continued support of our efforts, and also our universal peace covenant that I'd like to give to each one of you.
Great.
This is what we read at midnight during the universal hour of peace, and all of you are, you know, welcome to do that as well, to be united in thought and action if you, if you wish to. This is a document that was created by about 30 different metaphysicians that encompasses what we believe peace moving across the face of the earth really looks like.
Thank you. Very good. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is your answer?
Yeah, what's that, so we start at the top on some of them?
Okay, sure. Okay, you can do that. Step here for a picture.
Okay, you want to, what do you hold?
They do in the picture.
Okay, all right. I'm going to see how you're going to do this. Okay. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay. Receipt of one letter I'd like to read is addressed to Jay Evans. race he went on to win on a personal and school bus with a time of 21.57 seconds. There's no doubt that Hoffman Estates High School team is on the fast track to success with Declan on board and he's only a junior for the really good news. And that's the, all that I have at this point, Tim, so good trustee comments, we'll start with trustee Arnett.
Um, thank you. Also on Saturday I had, uh, the pleasure of attending Skate With Santa. Uh, I did not skate but I did pass out candy canes and it was a very, very good turnout and I was very impressed. That's all I have.
Okay, trustee Stanton.
Uh, let's see, on the 8th I was able to attend the Windy City Bulls for the Hoffman Estates Appreciation Night. Seem to be tripping over my tongue tonight. On the 9th I was able to stop by the Village Hall here for the Youth Commission Art Event and on the 12th I had a chance to meet with, uh, Mr. JB Pritzker with the mayor and I going into attendance to the meet and greet which is in Glenview and we met with some of the other mayors also in the Northwest suburbs. That's it.
Okay, trustee Mills.
On the 8th of December I also was at the Windy City Bulls Hoffman Estates Appreciation Night and they had a great crowd there that night to, uh, enjoy a basketball game even though unfortunately they lost, it was fun. On the next day on the 9th, uh, my family and I attended the Park District's Breakfast with Santa, their annual, um, event and it was a great turnout and a great, they have a great Santa that that attends there with the kids and also that afterwards they had their winter fest outside on Poplar Creek Golf Course which was also fun. Um, tonight we had the reception for Declan Ruste which is an excellent example of, uh, our students and some great teenagers in town and on the 12th I got to be a proud grandmother and went to my 10-year-old granddaughter's violin debut out in Sycamore.
Cool.
And they were great, they were all in in sync with each other which was amazing in itself, so that's it.
That's great.
And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, whatever else, other event that you celebrate. This is our last meeting of the year and I wanna thank staff and everyone here for all that you've done to enhance our village. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Trustee Palafas.
Like trustee Mills, I wanted to, uh, thank our staff and, uh, you know, we made it through another year. Uh, thanks for all the great work all of you do, all of you and all of your people. Uh, we really appreciate it and, uh, other than, you know, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, that's all I have to share.
Great. Trustee Newell.
Okay, just a couple of short things. On the 9th, the youth art event which was really a lot of fun to attend, uh, all the creative minds going. Um, on the 15th, um, condolences, uh, to the Bergman family, uh, they had the wake. Um, on the 16th, of course, we did the candy cane pass out, no skating with Santa, we just waved at 'em, that was enough. Um, this evening, congrats to, uh, Declan Ruste. Um, hopefully he'll do it again next year and to everyone, whether your staff, residents, or the board up here, have a safe and a happy holiday no matter what holiday you celebrate.
Thank you. Trustee Gata.
There we go, on Saturday, the 9th, we attended the, uh, yes, right, uh, the, um, Commission Art Event which was here and it is fun to watch these little kids, right, trying to paint without getting it on themselves which was really something else. Anyways, and then on the 16th, we all attended the Skate With Santa at, uh, the Tripon Center and just like, uh, one of you said, right, what a crowd, I mean, there was over 400 kids there and I don't think we missed anybody as far as giving the candy cane and the thing is that the mayor and trustees Newell and Arnett and clerk Romanoff was with us also so that made it easier and congratulations to Declan and for the staff for putting up with us, right, for a whole year so you can relax for a few weeks and we're coming right back, okay? And all be safe, thank you.
Thank you trustee Gata. Move on to 6C Village Manager's Report.
You can't top that, happy holidays.
Great. I'm sure the village clerk has something to say.
I do. I do, um, two weeks ago I had said that the State of Illinois was not, we, our driver's licenses and everything, you're gonna need a passport to travel anywhere, um, we've been granted an extension until October so we've got, and it's on our website, so.
Great.
Um, got a few more months for this state to, at least in this passport, um, real ID piece, get their act straightened out, maybe there's more hope for that than anything else in the state to get done. That's it.
Okay, we hope so. 6C Treasurer's Report.
Village Treasurer has prepared his report for the month of October and it's ready for your review.
Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion to second, any questions on the Treasurer's Report? See no questions, this is a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report. Can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills? Aye. Trustee Newell? Aye. Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Planning and zoning commission reports. 7A, request by Atasca Bank and Trust Company, trust number 12551, owner and Stonegate Properties Inc., applicant for a site plan amendment for a second drive-through on the property located 2061-2071 North Barrington Road with five conditions, CPAC, it's, uh, motion failed and item was deferred, see the minutes of December 4th, 2017.
So moved.
So what is the motion for?
To accept.
But it's a denial.
Well, no, it's a denial. Mr. Copeland, you wanna, uh?
Oh, that's right.
Roll through what's happening here?
Uh, the motion at the Planning Commission was, um, failed so a positive vote, uh, by the board would uphold, uh, the, uh?
The denial.
The denial. Um, Corporation Counsel can respond to the voting procedure.
Yes, no?
I thought we voted the, uh, motion for reconsideration the last time.
They deferred it to this meeting, so this is the actual disposition of the Planning and Zoning Commission Report.
That is correct.
And, um, it's not a zoning or a site plan so it doesn't take a special majority or anything, it's only, it's, excuse me, it's not a rezoning or a special use, it's only a site plan which is a simple majority of the board. If you want the, to approve the site plan, oh, you would need to vote against this motion and then do a motion to approve.
Is there a motion? Yeah, we already made a motion. Okay. Is there any discussion? Yes.
A memo in your packet, uh, there are three conditions that if the board wants to move ahead that the staff is recommending be changed. Um, condition, uh, number 1A, um, that related to the shared parking since that, if those documents are found to be in order by Corporation Counsel, we're recommending that that condition be revised to say this site plan amendment shall only be valid as long as the subject properties tenants have a documented legal right to use the Northwest Corporate Center parking spaces immediately adjacent to the east of the subject property. It's very similar to what you've done in other shared parking, um, areas. Uh, then condition A3, um, should be re, because there is the whole issue of where the signs will be located and, uh, if I remember correctly, the trustee Stanton or trustee Mills asked about that, uh, we're proposing as part of that condition that it comes back through, uh, committee to make sure that the signs are acceptable to the board so it says prior to issuance of a tenant build-off permit for the Jimmy John's unit, the petitioner shall submit a comprehensive wayfinding plan for the property that provides guidance to drivers using the dual-purpose drive-through and addresses any permitted off-site and rear parking that will serve tenants of the building. The plan shall be subject to review and approval by the village board through the Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee and may include pavement striping instructional slash directional signage as allowed by the village sign code. Then the last one is condition A4, all property maintenance violations on the subject property shall be corrected prior to the issuance of any occupancy permit for the Jimmy John's space or by January 31st, 2018, whichever comes first.
Okay.
We're recommending those changes to the conditions.
Is there a motion to accept those changes?
Are these changes, excuse me, are these changes to A or just to B?
They would be to A.
They were A1, A3, and A4.
A4.
Okay, they are, okay.
I'll make a motion to amend the original, um, conditions to reflect as written.
I'll second. Motion to second, all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have a motion carried. Now, we already have amendment on the floor, nobody else has anything to say, can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton?
Nay.
Trustee Gata?
Nay.
Trustee Arnett? Nay. Trustee Mills? Nay. Trustee Newell? Aye. Trustee Palafas?
Nay.
I'm sorry, Mayor McLeod, I was writing down.
Okay, that motion went down, is there a new motion?
Make a motion to, uh, approve the request by Atasca Bank and Trust Company, trust 12551, owner and Stonegate Properties Incorporated applicant for a site plan amendment for a second drive-through on the property located at 2061 to 2071 North Barrington Road with, I guess, eight conditions now.
No, it would be five amended, with as amended.
Five amended conditions.
Including the amendments that were just turned down there.
Cause it's still five conditions.
Including the amendments for A1, A3, and A4.
As said.
I'll second. Okay, motion to second, any discussion on these? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have a motion carried. You'll have to do a roll call vote on this.
Do a roll call on that, don't we?
Right, right. I'm gonna poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Nay.
Trustee Arnett? Nay. Trustee Mills? Nay. Trustee Newell? Aye. And Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. 7B, request by Atasca Bank and Trust Company, owner and Stonegate Properties Incorporated applicant for a site plan amendment for a second drive-through on the property located at 2061 to 2071 North Barrington Road with, I guess, eight conditions now.
No, it would be five amended, with as amended.
Five amended conditions.
Including the amendments that were just turned down there.
Cause it's still five conditions.
Including the amendments for A1, A3, and A4.
As said.
I'll second. Okay, motion to second, any discussion on these? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have a motion carried. You'll have to do a roll call vote on this.
Do a roll call on that, don't we?
Right, right. I'm gonna poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett? Aye. Trustee Mills? Aye. Trustee Newell? Aye. Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. 7B, request by Atasca Bank and Trust Company, owner and Stonegate Properties applicant for variation under section 9-3-8-M-10-E-1 of the zoning code to permit a third 11-square-foot menu board sign and additional ground sign, three-square-foot speaker post on the property located at 2061-2071 North Barrington Road with four conditions. Again, this was turned down by the. I'll make a motion.
Second.
This is a motion to sustain the finding of the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. There's a motion to second.
There's no need to change any conditions on this one?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Hey, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton?
Nay.
Trustee Gata?
Nay.
Trustee Mills?
Nay.
Trustee Arnett? Aye. Trustee Mills? Aye. Trustee Newell? Aye. Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. 7B, request by Atasca Bank and Trust Company, owner and Stonegate Properties applicant for variation under section 9-3-8-M-10-E-1 of the zoning code to permit a third 11-square-foot menu board sign and additional ground sign, three-square-foot speaker post on the property located at 2061-2071 North Barrington Road with four conditions. Again, this was, uh, turned down by the. I'll make a motion.
Second.
This is a motion to sustain the finding of the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. There's a motion to second.
There's no need to change any conditions on this one?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Hey, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton?
Nay.
Trustee Gata?
Nay.
Trustee Arnett? Nay. Trustee Mills? Nay. Trustee Newell? Aye. And Mayor McLeod?
Aye. Motion defeated, is there another motion? I'm a nay. What's your motion?